Mr. City Clerk, could you call the roll for the council, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Mayor Protam Drayman.
Here.
And for the agency, please.
Agency members Drayman.
Here.
Najarian.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Friedman.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Could we hear the report?
Report.
Your report, please.
Certainly. The agenda for the August 24-20 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was postponed on Thursday, August 19, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Kosakian. All right, let us turn to, well, it's a jump ball between libraries, planning, parks, housing. Who are we going to, Mr. City Manager?
Well, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mayor, if I can read the item into the record for our viewers that way.
Well.
And anyone following online.
Okay.
Directors of Community Redevelopment and Housing, Community Planning, Community Services and Parks, and the libraries, avering Glendale Urban Art Program. At one is agency motion providing direction to staff, and at one B is council motion providing direction to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Kosakian. I apologize for stepping on you there. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Najarian is out, as you know. He's in Korea, and as the Mayor Protam this month, it falls to me, and I guess I'm rusty. So, I apologize, Mr. Kosakian. All right, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'll go to Alan Loomis for the staff report. Alan.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the agency and council, this report is regarding the 1 percent for art program. It's a promulgation of that. At that time, the agency and council revisited the 1 percent for art program in downtown specific plan and directed staff explore options for its hand amount for city funds. Under the adopted downtown specific plan, downtown development is dedicated 1 percent of their project cost to onsite art or pay that amount to a city managed urban art fund. That is the program as it's adopted in the specific plan today. To expand this program citywide, based on the discussion we had in May, staff is recommending the following for council consideration. First is that we would have the onsite art program would actually be equal to 2 percent of the project cost with the in lieu fee option being set at 1 percent. This is, to a certain extent, to be an incentive for developers to pay into the urban art fund. In May, the council had expressed an interest in establishing a straight art fee, and having investigated that, we found that there is no legal precedent for a simple art fee. So, setting the onsite art requirement at 2 percent with the in lieu fee option at 1 percent would pass, we think would pass legal muster and would be an incentive to pay into the fund. Secondly, the urban art requirement would apply to all commercial or mixed-use zones in the city. This would not apply to industrial properties or any of our residential multifamily or single-family residential zones would be exempt from this. There's also a variety of programs or properties, projects in the downtown specific plans such as affordable housing or historic resources that are exempt from the urban art program. We're proposing to extend that, those exemptions, citywide, and council may also wish to consider other possible exemptions from this program. For example, the auto dealers on South Brand Boulevard, as a matter of economic development policy, are exempt from a number of development fees. Some direction as to whether they should also be exempt from the art fund would be useful. Third, we are proposing that the review authority for onsite art installations would be the final review authority. In most cases, this is going to be the agency or council for the mixed-use zones on San Fernando Road. For commercial properties, it is more than likely going to be the design review board. However, following the practice that we've used on the two projects that have, in the downtown, that have adopted art plans, we would propose that all urban art program, all onsite art installations would go to the arts commission for review and a recommendation to the final review authority. So, there'd be a stop at the arts commission for input, and then either the council or the design review authority would be the final decision maker on art installation in the context of all other approvals that they would be reviewing. And then finally, as this program should be developed, we need to develop an administrative policy regarding the use of these funds and the guidelines for how they'd be administered, the kinds of programs that they should be applied to. That's a kind of later phase, we think, that should be looked into, should the council wish to continue pursuing a citywide program. So, that's a brief summary of the report that we've presented, and there's other information and other staff that's worked on this report is available to answer more detailed questions. So, we're looking for council direction on these four items, and also asking that at this time you would initiate the zoning code amendment so that we could write, draft a language, an ordinance that would implement a citywide arts program as described here. So, with that, I and other staff will be available for questions and look forward to your discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Loomis. Let me just ask one question and then ask you for clarification, not so much for me, but just for anyone listening in. When you talk about the administration of funds, which would be a later, an issue to be discussed later, what do we know of the legalities related to the direction of those funds? The reason I'm asking is this. I have been a proponent of this. I've been asking for this for some time, this issue that we're discussing today. I believe it's important for our city. But I want to make sure that there's a wide range of areas that these funds, if this were to pass, that these funds can be applied. So, in other words, I want to know that if I'm taking this step, what do we think the legalities are with regard to using these funds, for example, not only to create some public art or to supplement some program that the council or the public wants, but also to supplement existing programs? For example, we know that there is an economic burden, if you will, I don't mean that in a pejorative way, but that's what it is, responsibility, let's put it that way. The Alex Theater is an example, improvements at the galleries at Brand Library, et cetera, et cetera. There are existing arts uses. Could those funds be used to supplement those things? That would come as a way of lifting some of that burden off of the general fund, for example.
Yes, given that you're asking a legal question, I think our legal counsel would be best to answer that.
Mr. Mayor, Protam, members of the council and agency, essentially because the fees being charged, would be charged in lieu of a development standard, there'd have to be some nexus to the impact, some nexus to public art or some nexus to providing an art component in the areas where the fee is being charged. It's sort of a broad question, but I think the types of programs that you suggest, or the types of activities you suggested using the fee would be permissible. I would say that some portion, and we'd have to work that out as we bring that part of it back, would have to be used for actual urban public art, just as the onsite requirement would be. We'd have to have that in there as part of the overall plan. But I think the types of programs that you stated, as far as what you'd be interested in using for, I think you could use those for. We surveyed a number of cities that have that sort of art fund and what they use it for, and they use it for all the types of activities that you just suggested.
I just want to make sure that there is, I mean, if we're talking about, one of the aspects about this, we're talking about taking it citywide.
Yeah.
We're taking it citywide, I want to make sure that there's a broad.
Yeah.
Area that we can at least consider for application of those funds, for new installations, for urban art, for existing infrastructure, et cetera, so.
And I think we could use that. We'd have to, again, we'll be looking at that a little more closely when we bring that part of it back. I think there'd be a problem, obviously, for use all that fee just for programming. But if you have a comprehensive program that uses the fees for different categories of art, I think that would be permissible, and a number of cities have done that.
And that may not be where this, where the agency and council want to go, but I want to make sure that before I were to cast a vote on this today, that I, that you're not telling me, no, that would be impermissible. So, Mr. Agani, you have moved to the microphone.
Thank you. We are expecting that we get some direction from the council agency for us to come up with some proposal on what might the public art program look like and look at examples elsewhere. And I think at that point, we can look at the examples of what's happening in other cities and then consult with the city attorney's office about the legal restrictions and give you a full report. But I can tell you that concerts at the pier in Santa Monica, concerts in downtown LA at the California Plaza, art installations in Little Tokyo, these are some examples that we can use, that we can refer to as places where the citywide public arts programs seem to be funnel to another city.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Loomis, I had promised you a part two. The part two is a clarification, and that was you mentioned the exemptions.
Yes.
And I want to know if you will, just because I, when you mentioned the phrase, you know, "citywide," but there are exemptions, and would you clarify those as they relate to housing, for example, areas of multi-unit or whatever?
Yes, we're proposing that this program apply to commercial and mixed-use zones in the city. So, multifamily, single-family zones and industrial zones, the program would simply not apply. So, most of the multifamily or residential projects we see wouldn't even be affected by this proposed program. Multifamily mixed-use projects and mixed-use zones, such as the downtown specific plan or along West Colorado and San Fernando Road project area, those would be subject to the program, and that's consistent with the downtown specific plan.
So, an example, let's say Broadway Lofts moves along to the point where it is, you know, they're looking like they're going to have their use and occupancy permit.
Yes, Broadway Lofts is in the downtown specific plan already, so that is subject to the existing 1 percent for art requirement. An example of projects would be, there's been a number of mixed-use projects proposed in the San Fernando Road project area. Those would be, if they came forward under this proposed program, would be subject to the requirement.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm sorry, Alan, let me apologize to my colleagues for taking up that time. Go to the city manager and then council member Quintero.
Just on that same point, to be clear, that a mixed-use project that is housing and commercial, the valuation on which this would be based would be both the housing component and the commercial component.
That's correct. The valuation of the total project.
The total project.
Thank you for that clarification. That's an important one. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, well, I support the concept, and I want flexibility built into what the staff and future councils, redevelopment agencies can do with the money. But I do hope it kind of goes more towards infrastructure than programming, et cetera. I would think that, that at least the first few years, we would want to focus on what we can do to sort of help put together venues for art, et cetera.
Okay. Council member Friedman.
Thank you. I have a few questions. The first one was about the proposed exclusion for mixed-use housing that had affordable components, and I'm wondering what you're proposing, how that would work. Would it be prorated based on the amount of affordable housing? Or if you have one affordable unit, does that mean you're completely out of the program? How does it work with the existing, how does it work with your existing program, and how would you propose that it work under this?
If I recall off the top of my head, and I can look it up, in the downtown specific plan, fully affordable housing projects are exempt. So, if you only partially affordable housing, you're not exempt from the program, I think, probably.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Secondly, do we currently audit these projects as they go forward in terms of the amount that they actually spend? I mean, in other words, how do we make sure that that 1 percent is really spent on, on the art component? Do we leave it, is it the honor system? Do we, do we only look at that if it's challenged or if we suspect that it wasn't spent? Just kind of wondering how it works, and the reason I'm asking, because if the incentive here is that you get to pay half if you pay into the program, well, if, if it's easy for people to fudge what they're paying, then we may not be seeing that benefit. So, how do we, how do we make sure that they're doing it now?
That would be one of the subjects we'd want to address through the administrative guidelines. What other cities have done is they actually have a sheet that the applicant is required to produce that sort of gives their proposed valuation of the art, and when the project is submitted for building and plan check, the building official verifies that information as part of, so in a sense, that's where the audit would occur.
Okay, so they would actually go and ask to see receipts or see a bill or that sort of thing?
I believe that's how it works in other cities, is they are looking at that sort of information.
Okay. Well, I think you understand the point. I just want to be sure that if, if that's our carrot, that we have a way of really enforcing that and making sure that that happens. And then, my last question is, what happens to projects, and then this goes for the current, the current 1 percent as well. What would happen to a building that was completely inaccessible to the public from any view? And I'm thinking, you know, mostly of, for instance, the Disney campus. Can they still use that 1 percent on, on a public art project attached to that building if it's not accessible at all to the general public?
That's an interesting question, because the guidelines, as they're written, is to say that should be public, accessible, visible by the general public, walking on the sidewalk. The Disney campus is not exactly the best example, because they're subject to a development agreement that locked in their fees and programs at that particular time.
Okay, so let's just hypothetically say there was another building that, for whatever reason, was inside of a compound or somehow was not accessible to the public. How would you then work that, under the current system?
We'd probably ask them to, if it was a campus, to consider placing the public art component someplace where it would be visible by the public, although we may just suggest, please pay the fee, since you can't meet the intent of the program.
Well, I, let me suggest that we have, that we include some sort of way of saying that if you have a building that is not going to be accessible, and it's, you know, it's just not possible, that they lose that ability to choose, because I think it defeats the purpose of public art if you have a site where, for whatever reason, it's not going to ever be public.
We can look into that.
Okay. And I don't know if you're ready for comments as well, or if you're.
Well, we have one speaker, so.
Okay.
Public first.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do that. Let's go to the public. We have, thank you, Alan, one speaker card, Herbert Milano.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Yes, sir. Three minutes.
Mayor Protam Drayman, members of the redevelopment agency and city council, city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I believe that this move that to, that this whole idea that you have been promoting for several years now, is my hope that it finally takes some traction. And I would like to suggest that Glendale is unique in having something that few other cities have, which is a very wide sidewalks on one of your main boulevards, meaning Brand Boulevard. And I think that the opportunity for having public art on Brand Boulevard in a significant way could really attract people to Glendale. Now, of course, we still need to come out with the restaurants and the, and the other venues, but I think it is the primary spot. I would like to invite Mr. Weaver, and maybe even at city expense, to go visit Sedona, Arizona, and look at the public art in all the main thoroughways. Or if you can go that far, go to Palm Desert and see the beautiful work that they've done, and they're frequent, the, throughout, you know, the main thoroughfare. The, so Portland, Oregon as well, significant amount of investment in public art that's been going on for decades. And I think that if we were to take that type of approach, where you actually walk down and see, you know, three, four examples of artwork that is public and easily accessible, and I think that Ms. Friedman is very right about that, it's got to be able to be of such element and such frequency that it really attracts people into the downtown. So, it must be numerous. With regard to the, to other examples of public artwork, in the city of Ventura, they have one of the most fantastic city halls you've ever, if you've ever been there, it's just an incredible place. And if you go through their main hallways, they have this significant artwork as a gallery. It's gorgeous work. So, I think that there are many examples, and it shouldn't take years for the city to come back to you with ideas on what to implement. Obviously, the money is a big issue. The other thing that I would like to consider with regard to music and is consider, again, maybe partnering with the Levitt Pavilion. They're doing a fantastic job in Pasadena, and I think that now that Central Park is almost finished, I think that the city should rethink the idea of having performances in a more centralized part of town. Our performance is way out there on Brand Park, so far away from where it truly, truly accessible. And it is my hope that, you know, with access to the library nearby, with access to the adult recreation center, you can segue all of that, the music and the art and the proximity, including downstairs. I mean, you now have a fantastic place that you're renovating, why not have that as a mini gallery? Anyway, those are my ideas, and I hope that you really push this thing to have some traction. I think this city really deserves something significant like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. All right, that was our only speaker card. Let me go to my colleagues for their comments or questions. Mr. Weaver.
Okay. I talked to staff and asked some questions already, so I'm not asking a bunch now. You know, I consider myself an artist too, though I haven't drawn in a long time, but I've heard that old adage, what is art for one person is not for the next person. So, how do you define the arts? Because there's, it's a wide spectrum. Having said that, to the point, I support the 2 percent and 1 percent as an incentive. It's going to take time to build up that reserve, since we don't have many projects going on right now in Glendale. To have a meaningful impact, you're going to have to have more than a couple thousand dollars sitting in the account. So, how will it work over time? No idea on that. They're asking us to, staff's asking us to give direction on projects being exempted. Rather than verbalize it, I'd like to see a list of different, different things that could be considered to be exempted. Let us go down through the list and say, yeah, agree, take, exempt this, exempt that, then everybody would know, be able to give input on what they think should be in or out. And, understand the Arts and Culture Commission had questions on that. I'm willing to buy in to Arts and Culture doing it, but I think we have to have some guidelines. I don't know quite if I'm saying this correctly, guidelines and the functions, how they go about it, because I guess it would eventually come to the agency or the council to approve it. And I would like Arts and Culture to really be defined on what they're looking at, what is presented to them, a filter, so to speak. So, we get here, we know that they've looked at certain things that would be applicable. I don't know, Mr. Agani, if I've said that, so, he's shaking his head, yes, so I guess I've said it about the right way. I'm willing to try it. It's, it's not my hot button topic in, in the city. The arts has its place. I think it is something in good times, good financial times, makes a lot of sense. You see symphony orchestras and everything else being cut back, even in Pasadena now. They're cutting their orchestra back. So, a lot of the arts things you'd like to do are for times of plenty, rather than when you're scraping through, like, we're not going to raise much money to begin with. But laying the groundwork and setting it all up for the good times, that's a good thing to do. So, did I answer staff's questions on what they wanted to hear? Mr. Agani says I did, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, the reason I mention less interested in programming and more in infrastructure is basically this is sort of one-time money. And so, I'd hate to have a situation where it goes into sort of programming, but in fact, there's not going to be a year after year funding source, you know, whereas a civic art center, you know, something that we can sort of put into the, put into the pot to help fund a, a specific site, I just think overall is a better bet. But I want to be flexible. There may be something that comes down the line that we're all in agreement is a great idea and can use this one-time money as seed money. But overall, I'm, I'm for the concept. I think it's a long time in coming.
Okay, let me quickly go back to Mr. Weaver.
That gave me a thought, Mr. Quintero. When the adult recreation center is complete, all the grass areas open, maybe one potential thing would be like, when the funds are there, to put some kind of a water feature in the park there, with the funds you could collect. That'd be one example of, because it is one-time money, as you said. That pot isn't going to continue to grow, or else the city will be totally overgrown with commercial properties, retail properties. There's got to be an end to it. So, putting it into a feature like Mr. Quintero said, the benefit, the public would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Friedman.
Thank you. Well, I am very glad to see this coming forward. I fully support this change. I want to thank Mr. Drayman, Mayor Protam Drayman, for championing this. I know it's important to him, and I think it's important for the city. And, you know, let's remember that these are, these are impact fees, and we charge them for a variety of things. One of the typical impact fees that developers pay is towards recreation, because the idea is that they're building, let's say, housing, they're bringing more people into the city, and they should have a hand then in providing the recreation that their tenants are going to need. And this is kind of similar, although it's more for commercial buildings, not so much for, for housing. But I do believe that businesses, this is a way of having them contribute to the city. We can't forget that we're in a city that doesn't charge a business license tax, so it's possible that somebody can operate a business here, drive on the roads, use the police, use the fire, and not pay anything, especially if they're not a sales tax generating business, and not pay anything at all into the city. So, I think it's proper. I, I think that it's pretty well established that arts provide a lot to a city in terms of economic development, vitality, important services to residents, and to overall quality of life. So, whatever this fund can do to help the arts ultimately will benefit not only the businesses in Glendale, but the residents of Glendale. I'm less concerned with over time how the money's going to be spent. I think it's going to be a learning process, something that the city will go through. We'll, there'll be mistakes, and there'll be projects that pay off beyond what we envision them paying off. So, that's going to be something that will develop over time. It's been my belief for quite a while that the Arts and the Culture Commission, that the role of that commission should really be to set policy that helps further arts and culture in the city. I've seen their role less as a programming arm of the city, and I think that they're at their best when they're working on policy and bringing policy forward to the city council that can help further arts and culture. I think that they have worked, not at their best, at times where they're trying to put on a show. And I'd like to see that commission more and more be pushed in the direction of develop policy, try to come up with an initiate policy that furthers arts and culture in the city of Glendale. In terms of programming, the arts and culture, I'm not sure whether that should be that commission or whether it should be something else. We have in Glendale Glendale Arts, which is a nonprofit that's city-supported. I personally believe that we should explore having that nonprofit take on some of the burden of doing this distribution of funds, because it's something that they're familiar with, and they've already been doing it out in the community. It's not, we're not going to make that decision today, but it's at least something to, to begin the discussion, and since staff is looking for, for sort of taking some temperature of where we're at, that's my inclination, is that it shouldn't be Arts and Culture out there spending all this money, but they should be developing policy. And, you know, in terms of getting the biggest bang for the buck and not spending it on an event, spending on infrastructure, you know, maybe, but there's also groups in the city like the Alex, like the new Glendale Philharmonic, like the older Glendale Symphony, that are also very important cultural institutions that would certainly benefit from having some sort of reliable funding source, even if it's small and only used on capital improvements that help those groups. So, this is a wonderful opportunity to not only get some great public art into the city, but also to, to help with some of those groups that are so important and which are so challenged in these economic times. So, I thank you again, Mayor Protam Drayman, and I look forward to seeing this sooner rather than later. Hopefully, as we have some building, we'll have the format and, and the method set up to get some of those funds out just in time for the new building boom that will happen, I think, at some point, hopefully in our lifetimes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. My comments are as follows. I, obviously, I'm happy to see this come forward. I think this is an important step. I think it's an important investment in the future of arts and Glendale. If something can be said about the Glendale I know from my childhood and adulthood, born and raised here, is that if Glendale has a tradition related to the arts, it's that we have no traditions related to the arts. It has never been a priority from a city standpoint. We have many artists in our community. We have many arts organizations over the years in our community who are very invested in the arts and very invested in how the arts can be integrated into the daily lives of our residents. But it hasn't been a city priority, and it's been important to me to make that change, to help make that change. And it's been important to me to make that change, to help make that change. Why? Because the arts are important. They're important not just from a touchy-feely kind of concept, but also because the arts, Arts and Culture is a tremendous economic development tool. And more recently, in the last year, two years, this council, this agency, has proven that to be the case. We have been taking steps to strengthen the nexus between economic development and arts and culture. I want to warn my colleagues, however, and warn city staff as well. This issue we're talking about is not going to be an easy one, because many of the developers that you all work with, that we all interact with, because we approve their projects or modify their projects, first thing they're going to do is tell you, hey, my project won't pencil out. This arts thing, how about we waive that? And then your words here on the dais today are going to run headlong into those requests. And you're going to have to be able to say, well, you know what? This is just as important as a park's fee. This is just as important as a library impact fee, or that kind of thing. We are balancing interests in our city. So I just, I want to put that out there, because that, that will most assuredly come I want to take a moment to agree with my colleague, Councilmember Friedman, with regard, and Agency Chair Friedman, with regard to the role of the Arts and Culture Commission, because I do believe that it is a policy setting. They should be doing more in the area of policy setting for arts and culture, rather than, as you put it, putting on a show. That is not what I view their role as being, nor should it be. And they are at their best when they are discussing policy issues vis-à-vis the arts and making recommendations to this council. That's what our boards and commissions do. You know, you don't see the Planning Commission saying, you know, I think we ought to go out and build a building, you know? And we don't see the Design Review Board going out and saying, you know what? We're going to, we're going to go out and raise some funds so we can go build a building. That's, or design a building. That's not what they do. Why, why would Arts and Culture Commission be any different? And I, I agree with you 100% on that. Where I have a slight, maybe it isn't even a disagreement. I also agree, we do need an organization that functions in the city to help advise with the direction of some of these funds at a later date. And in terms of programming, I, that is the whole idea behind, if I can say the words, Glendale, the idea of a Glendale Arts Council. That is precisely why this council voted to, to bring that initiative forward. And that is the role for programming, not the Arts and Culture Commission. And the only reason I say I think it may be a disagreement is that I don't necessarily view the role of Glendale Arts as doing that programming. Maybe it will be, maybe it won't. When the Arts and Culture Commission comes back to us, which I know won't be that terribly long, and we get to a point where there is a, whatever we're calling it, an RFP, or whatever that process is, maybe it will be Glendale Arts that will fill that role. Maybe it won't be. But that is the role for Arts Council, that is specifically dealing with that sort of thing. In any case, I thank my colleagues for pursuing this and hearing it out. I thank staff for taking, and legal staff in particular, for the headache this has given you in terms of trying to sort all this out. As I said, if, I view it as an investment for the city. And it's a big step forward. I think it's important that we do it now, while the economy is the way it is. We should be laying the groundwork now. Glendale will not be stalled forever, and other municipalities as well, in terms of building and development. And it's better that we buy our ticket now at the train station and be ready when the train arrives than to do what we've done in the past with regard to the arts and other areas, which is show up at the train station just as the train has left the station and say, hey, we didn't get aboard. So I, I'm very happy that we're doing this. Councilmember Friedman.
Yeah, if you'll just indulge me one more little statement, which is maybe a little bit off-topic, but something I just want to get out there to the public, which is, and it's something that I thought of when you were mentioning how some of the developers are certainly not going to be very happy about this, and that's true. But I, you know, I also just want to say that there's a lot of people in Glendale, I think that would be very happy if the development slowed down or stopped. You know, there's a lot of people who feel that we have enough buildings, and we have enough development, and we have enough people, although this involves, you know, commercial, not residential. And, you know, it is time that Glendale recognize and be serious about the impact that any kind of development has on the city, whether it's in terms of resources like water, or bringing more people in, or more, just more cars on the street. It's an impact to the people who live here, which makes it even more appropriate to have this kind of an impact fee so that the people of Glendale get something back for these projects, you know, beyond just the tax base. And that's what this is really about. And so for me, and my answer to the developers will be, it's, if you want to build in this city, it's a privilege to build in Glendale and to have your, your property be developed to its fullest in Glendale, and it will cost you. And I feel that for my constituents, that what I owe them is that if development, to the extent that development happens and the economy comes back to where there's development happening, that the city needs to be sure that the residents get sort of their fair share out of it and get those impacts mitigated, whether it's traffic, recreation, all of those things. And arts and culture and having something being given to the Alex and to the other groups in the city is something that we can do to mitigate some of those impacts. So I think it's only fair, and the developers should, should realize that, so.
Thank you. And let me just also add, because you do raise a very good point, and that is, the notion is that people who are investing in our city with a building project are investing in all of our city. People who live here as well as just placing a building out there. And again, this will affect some housing, as it relates to, you know, in the project area and so on. So, but in any case, this is not new. Right now, in the project area anyway, that 1% is already a fact of life in the city of Glendale. And I think we owe a thank you, I think partly to Mr. Gani, that, that even that sort of one sentence that's in there right now is there, because it wouldn't be there otherwise. But this simply gives an option, and I think that that, and an incentive, as Mr. Loomis put it, so.
So do you need a motion? What kind of a motion are you looking for?
Was the direction sufficient for?
That's what I'd like to have.
Want to have it rid back?
Could you please tell us what we told you to do?
Certainly. Mr. Loomis, can you tell us what you, what you gleaned from all of this discussion from us?
Yes, I heard support for the 2% onsite installation or 1% in lieu fee proposal. There is a suggestion that we come forward with a list of potential exemptions for future discussion, and then the full council could go through that list and discuss them rather than giving direction right now. Interest in having some guidelines for the Arts and Culture Commission, how they would review onsite art installation so that their discussion and review is focused, and we can come back with that and explore that. There's also some discussion about the role of the Arts Commission in terms of programming versus policy, and again, as part of drafting guidelines, we can make some suggestions regarding that. Overall, there is also an interest in seeing the distribution and the use of the funds and the, that would be paid in lieu of the onsite installation, ensuring that those funds could be flexibly applied based on the interests of the community and council at the time, at that particular time. So I think that sums up the majority of the comments I'd written down. And I could also say, one of the other things we'd be looking for is also the formal initiation of an amendment to the zoning code, so we could actually draft the ordinance that would begin to implement this, for your review.
Right, Councilmember.
Quick question. With any of this discussion that's going to be coming back to us, will any of those proposals or any of this piece, this ordinance, go in front of Arts and Culture Commission prior to adoption?
At this point, no. The discussion of the percent for art citywide is really a land use issue that will go to the Planning Commission. I think what we heard as a direction from at least two council members was that to distinguish the role of the Arts and Culture Commission as opposed to Glendale Arts, as opposed to the Arts Council and other bodies, and that you wanted us to make sure that, I think, Ms. Friedman, you mentioned that the Arts and Culture Commission's role should be mainly suggesting policy to the council and not necessarily recommending programming, and I think we understood that. If there is a piece of what their role should be, we might run that piece for them?
Well, just to clarify, I mean, you know, not, I'm just giving you a hypothetical. This is not something I'm suggesting that we do. But it would make sense to me, for instance, that the Arts and Culture Commission might say, okay, we want this certain percentage to go to live performance and this percentage to go to public art, but they may not be the ones who decide what live performance, what groups, what public art in particular. Does that make sense?
I don't think we are going to get to that level of conversation with any commission at this point. I think what we will propose to you in our report would be ideas for programming and get specific direction from you as to which commissions we should probably discuss and which other groups. You might want us to contact and have discussions to bring more ideas to you. I think the programming, from what I'm hearing, you would like to maintain with yourselves primarily, and maybe some pieces of it you would like to direct us to take to other commissions. At this point, I'm not hearing that you would like us to do that, to say a percent of the funds should be used this way, a percent that way.
I, I would say that, I think that that is, would be a little bit premature at this point. I think we need to create the basis to, to create such a fund. And, and have further debate and discussion as to how that, how those funds would be used and who would make what determinations and...
But it's going in front of the Planning Commission. I mean, that was my basic question, was where does it go from here? So.
The amendment to the zoning code will go before the Planning Commission. But I think what I'm also taking away from this is that we should come back with a paper, really holistically looking at the arts program and the public arts program, the roles of the different bodies that exist within the city, and provide with some, with you, with some scenarios for you to consider as to where you would like to take the overall program from then on.
Good. Mr. Weaver, anything else?
Oh, that, that's fine, the 2%, the 1%, that could go straight ahead now.
Right. Mr. Quintero, anything else?
I just wanted to add for the general public, in addition to this fee, we also have our parks fee, where same thing, large blocks of money, when development starts again, will go directly into greening areas in Glendale around these redevelopment zones. So we have two opportunities to, to do things here in the city whenever a major project gets built.
That's true. Mr. City Manager, you had your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. It, it does seem to me that there will be lots of time to talk about the details. I think what's most important is we get the enabling legislation back to you as quickly as possible. In, in all of these efforts that we've undertaken, we always have the concern expressed by developers about where they happen to be in their process and what assumptions they've made as they put their pro formas together. And the quicker we can formalize this and get it adopted, and in effect, send the message out there that this is the fee in Glendale, the easier it'll be to resolve those concerns when they come forward. Mr. Drayman, I greatly appreciated your comments, because I think that is what we'll hear, as we always do from the developers, is why their project is so important, that this or that fee needs to be waived, especially as we move out of the recession and begin to get some of those, I'll call them the leading-edge kinds of projects that are kind of out there in a little bit of risky territory from what they were three years ago. So I think first and foremost, we need to get the legislation through and get it back to you and get, make sure that's in place. And then I suspect there'll be lots of time to talk about all the processes while we wait for the money to come in.
Right. Mr. Weaver.
I just wanted to add to staff, let's go into the Planning Commission, make sure every developer and every developer rep in this town knows so they can come in and crucify the Planning Commission before they come here.
You mean to give them a chance to rehearse before they come here?
That's right. We can watch the tape and see where we're going to get slugged.
All right. So to recap, Mr. City Manager, I, what I take from what you said is, there'll be lots of time to talk about it, but we shouldn't take lots of time to talk about it. We should, we should get this moving forward.
Is he saying we're talking too much?
Yes.
Maybe a little. Okay. All right. Anything else? Do we need a motion on, on these two items?
We do need a motion on B, the council item, just to initiate the changes to the zoning code, as well as the DSP to...
For form's sake, let's, let's take a motion and a vote on both.
May the agency too, right?
Okay, so I will move, what am I moving?
For council.
We don't need to do 1A apparently.
I know we don't need to, we're going to, though.
Okay, for item 1A?
It is for, for form's sake. This is such a moment in my lifetime, and I know, Mr. Weaver, is that Glendale is actually addressing an incentive to...
So then, if you want, if the agency wants to make a motion, it can make a motion providing direction as summarized by Mr. Loomis.
As stated, right. Okay.
I'll move 1A for the agency.
And I'll move 2A.
Well, let's get a second on 1A.
Sorry.
We have a second, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Kosakian, if you'd call a roll, please, for the agency.
Agency Chair. Agency members, Drayman?
Yes.
Najarian? Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Chair Friedman?
Yes.
Now, do we have a motion?
1B for the council.
Just, just for the record, 1B is providing direction as...
Get out, get out.
And initiating the code amendments to the DSP and the code.
Oh, that's right. That's right, that's my motion.
To implement the changes.
And Mr. Quintero, you have a second on that? All right. Mr. Kosakian, please.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Mayor Protem Drayman?
Yes.
He caught the difference.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
For the council, and do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion to adjourn for the agency?
So moved.
Second.
Your turn.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, let's do...